Yeah, it it does.
Yeah.
But we were stationed there for four years.
Okay. Give the viewers behind a sense of uh the uh your fan base.
Believe me, I was really.
It was so cold.
Oh, that's hot.
Day, night, day.
I think that name sounded familiar.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, when you when you live there, you learn to hate the blackout curtains. You just hate.
I read the agenda, you read the.
Because you know, light comes to the track, you. Yeah, and you never really can get that real sleep. So you have you just tape, you just have to tape the tape the thing. And we stay on military basement. And we had those green shutters. Tape them down.
Checking to see how much my my second hand is tied.
Because it was tough.
Well.
But it is beautiful.
Oh, I'm only seven seconds back.
Wow. Everything's all synchronized.
Pretty good.
All right, everyone, it's six P M., so we're gonna go ahead and get started, and we'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, please call roll call.
Chair Philip Lantry.
President.
Vice Chair Russell Alexander.
President.
Member Nanette Douglas.
Here.
Member Dawn Grisby.
Present.
Member Ruby Bridgworth.
Present.
Member Daisy Snyder.
Present.
Member Mary Marshall.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
All right, thank you. All right, first order of business is approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held on September sixteenth. Do we have any discussion? Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes? Would someone like to entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to accept, do I have a second?
Second.
All, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, first action item is resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one three nine R, which is DMI Business Park. And that's C N U two five dash zero 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 five.
Good evening, Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development. The case before you tonight is for a conditional use for the project known as DMI Business Park. Case number C N U two five dash zero 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 five, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one three nine R. Currently, there is a future, future land use of industrial, as well as employment, which was approved October ninth via the future land use element. The existing zoning is I one industrial. The proposed conditional use is a place of worship in an I one zoning. Proposed operation times, Wednesday evenings starting at seven P M., Sunday mornings and some afternoons starting at ten and or twelve. And the proposed capacity is thirty members. Here is a graphic representation of the future land use, showing the I one of future land use. And here's a graphic representation of the zoning. Here is a graphic representation of where the place of worship will be located, it will be located in building one. Honor before September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, staff recommends approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one three nine R, with the following conditions. One, the approval of the requested conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan. Changes to the site will require approval of a site development plan, and any additional approvals required by the Land Development Code. Two, no reduction in parking shall be permitted. Three. This approval is for this place of worship, the Upper Room Sanctuary Church only. Upon this church leaving the subject property, the conditional use shall expire. Four, for as long as the use permitted here hereunder continues, in the event the stacking or standing of vehicles approaches into the public right-of-way or otherwise interferes with flow of vehicular traffic as determined by the city, the resolution may be brought back before the council, before the city council for review and consideration of additional conditions to address traffic issues or possible re-revocation of rights granted hereunder in per mortality. Likewise, is recommended that the Planning Commission also recommend approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one three nine R, with the with the conditions as stated by staff. Uh, staff in the applicant and owner are available for questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present, and would you like to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay, I have a question then, while you're up here, about condition number, I think it was two, if you could go back to that slide. No reduction in parking, uh, could you go back to the um, concept plan? I'm just curious how many parking spaces there actually are here.
Hi, I'm Danny Martinez, I'm the owner. Um, there's seven per building. And then I have additional parking will be in later on phase two if we need it. But the way it's set up right now, it should work out just fine for the amount of parking stalls per building. So they're not gonna be parked out in the street or anything like that, so.
What is the, what are the building sizes, I was just trying to.
Uh, seventy by thirty, twenty-one hundred.
And they're just gonna be in the one building, right?
Yeah.
So are there other parking spots available to you during?
Yeah, if needed.
Is that what it is?
At at the hours they'll be working, or worshiping, and then the other hours that the other tenants do, it it'll all work out fine because they're all working different hours.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
Just to make sure I'm clear, that we'd be like a maximum of twenty-six parking spots with two handicap spots, and that should be enough to accommodate unless the other people are using their spots.
According to the city, um, I don't know what you call it, but yeah, it's four to a stall per car is the way they do it. So there's, there's more than sufficient parking, and like I said, I'll be putting in phase two here pretty quick, and you'll have additional parking on phase two, too. A lot more parking stalls going in there.
What he's saying is that the it's, the requirement is one parking space per four occupants.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Something like that.
Good evening, Marcus Bastian Deputy Director, um, for Community Development, and we have discussions, we've had discussions internally, uh, our team, because um, the requirement, I believe, is actually one for every three attendees. Their capacity is capped out for the church, uh, in this particular application for thirty, so they will need potentially ten parking spaces. Um, however, uh, we are also going to discuss with the applicant that for the next phases that we do, uh, have a complete account for the whole project, and to make sure that everything that is planned for phase one and phase two is accommodated. So you are correct that that, uh, we need to make sure that this is looked in a holistic way, if you will, okay?
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I have a question. Under the um, public notice, one of the comments made was regarding a proposed installation of a fence. Is that part of the conditions?
No, it.
Um, come again, you said the notice.
It said here under the public notice, um, there was a comment received from the public regarding the proposed installation of a fence on the northwest side of the property to restrict access during dismissal at the time of this report's distribution.
Um, staff is not aware of that comment, I wasn't either, uh, but we can discuss with the applicant and owner because they are in the process of phase two, so we can discuss with staff whether or not that condition is needed.
Yeah, I'm in. We'll look into that as we hit phase two, but right now, you don't, it's all industrial R one, so it doesn't need a fence right at the moment, and it, you know, because of the size of it.
Any other questions? All right, then at this time, I would like to allow for public comment. Would anybody in the audience like to make any comments on this action item? Okay, at this time, we will close the public comment session. Are there any other questions or discussion by the commission?
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder to the commission members, it's a conditional use application, so whatever motion is forwarded would include the recognition of consideration of the six factors under the Land Development Code. And in this case, uh, uh, consideration at least from staff of the conditions that they suggested.
The four conditions, right?
There are four in the presentation, yes, sir.
All right, with all that being said, if I have no other discussion, I'd like to call for a motion.
Um, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen R, based on the six factual matters within the Land Development Code.
The conditions. Ms. Douglas, do you also wish to include the conditions that were proposed?
Yes, including the four conditions that were provided in the presentation.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Of approval, I should say, thank you. Anybody opposed to approval? All right, motion passes. Five zero.
Passes five zero, yes, sir.
Okay, action item B is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash six seven. This is a planned unit development zoning district, or they're applying for a planned unit development, it's called Harvest Grove. And this is P U D two four dash zero 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 five.
Good evening, once again, Marcus Bastian, uh, Community Development Deputy Director. As, um, was already mentioned, this property, or this project is the Harvest Grove P U D preliminary master plan and final master plan. Uh, the property has approximately seventeen point thirty-five acres, uh, and it was annexed into Saint Cloud earlier this year with ordinance twenty twenty-five twelve. It has a future land use of medium density residential, also by, um, ordinance twenty twenty-five thirteen earlier this year, and it has a proposed zoning of P U D, which is planned new development. The proposed development program for this property is a hundred and thirty-six, uh, single-family attached units, uh, with sixty of them being front-loaded, uh, units, and the remaining seventy-six rear-loaded. Uh, the proposed density is seven point ninety-seven units per acre, which is below the threshold of maximum density of, uh, ten units, uh, dwelling units per acre, uh, which is the maximum for M D R, future land use. Um, they, uh, the applicant has also supplied, or is also in the process of having a PSP reviewed, uh, which is not under consideration tonight, but that is for the preliminary subdivision plan and final master plan. That is PSP twenty-five zero zero two. Here we see an aerial photo of the site, um, it is located just south of Lian Lee Road and, um, west of Puffin Road. Here we see, um, depiction of the future land use that is M D R. Um, I will mention that this is actually the future land use that just got adopted by our city council about, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, yes, so, so this already shows the new designation, the only difference from the, uh, old one in this case is you see the two little properties to the north that have J P A L D R, this is a new designation in our, uh, future land use code. This is the existing zoning, um, and you can see that, uh, three of the four parcels have an R one B designation with a fourth one pending, which was, uh, subject of a prior annexation, where we don't need to allocate immediately the zoning. However, uh, this designation will change to P U D if it gets approved, uh, and so the whole property will become a planned unit development. This next image shows, um, in the north here is rotated to your right. Um, so north is, uh, where the, uh, proposed plan tax box is. And it shows, uh, the, uh, townhomes that are, um, rear-loaded are the purple ones, uh, they're twenty by one twenty. And then it also shows the twenty-five by, uh, ninety front-loaded townhomes that are in red, and the remaining tracks are in green open space, and then the pond track is shown in blue. Uh, there's also a right-of-way dedication, uh, towards the east side of the property along Puffin Road. Little bit more on the background of this project, um, and this is all, uh, this is not the staff's opinion, this is we're just literally, uh, taking from the applicant's narrative. So, um, the proposed P U D includes Florida friendly landscaping and enhanced buffer with a level of mature vegetation and planting, enhanced landscaping to be installed along Puffin Road, enhanced buffer, uh, uh, along the entire perimeter with a twenty-five foot minimum. Enhanced building separation between the townhome units, the code requirement is, uh, ten feet, and separation provided is fifteen feet. Um, additionally, we have, uh, community safety to be enhanced via looped, uh, uh, internal street network with emergency access without need for hammerheads or turnarounds or cul-de-sacs. Uh, the pedestrian and, uh, bicycle friendly amenities that are provided to the site, and the construction of Puffin Road from the proposed development south property line to the north. Finally, uh, open space is provided, uh, in excess by twenty-two percent, uh, uh, of the minimum open space requirement. The required open space is four acres, and the development contains five point twenty-one acres of open space. Uh, building elevations, wraparound architecture standards on secondary facades, and alternate facades to create a visual variety, uh, in the community, and all internal streets will be privately maintained by the homeowners association. Lastly, um, the project provides enhanced amenities for the community, uh, that includes point thirty-six acres of trails, uh, in addition to sidewalks, uh, workout stations, benches, um, park, or a dog park, playground, swing set, and connected sidewalks. Uh, sidewalk, sorry. Uh, our staff recommendation is that, um, honor before August nineteenth, uh, staff recommends approval of P U D zoning preliminary master plan, final master plan for ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-five sixty-seven, identified as Harvest Grove P U D, also known as, uh, or formerly known as Nona Townhomes, uh, P U D twenty-four zero zero five. And the recommended action is that, um, uh, per section one three three B one of the Land Development Code, Planning Commission shall review annexation land use and zoning petitions and submit any, uh, submit its recommendations to the city council based on the sixteen required findings of fact in section one three three C two A of the Land Development Code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present, and would you like to speak?
Good evening, uh, Cameron Hiddle with Hanson Walter and Associates, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for staff or the applicant?
I feel like I do, but I don't know what to ask.
All right, so I'll, I'll get started here, I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to the slide showing the master plan?
I would love to, if the clicker works.
Yeah, this is good. Uh, so it shows a connect, connection to Goldcrest Drive, which I believe connects into the existing neighborhood. Uh, and then also three connections to Puffin Road, so my question is, is it in fact connecting to Goldcrest Drive, and then Puffin, Puffin Road, is that going through to one ninety-two? I don't believe it does now. Is that also part of the project, or? I, I seem to recall that that was an agreement or something.
Puffin Road with this project will be improved to a curmudgeon intersection for the city code, excuse me, from Lian Lee to the south, uh, project boundary. Um, there are other projects that were approved, um, through the city, south of us, um, which was Exchange Apartments, and then there's a commercial piece that's coming in. There is currently an approved plan through those, through Osceola County, to extend Puffin Road to one ninety-two. Um, so whenever those projects move forward with construction, Puffin Road will extend down to one ninety-two, but not with this project.
Okay, so the entrance and exit from the development is through Goldcrest Drive or Puffin Drive to the north, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Majority would go, I would assume would go through Puffin up to Lian Lee Road. Um, however, there is a connection that we're required to make, um, through the city code to Goldcrest, which is the Rivercrest, uh, community to the west.
Okay, uh, my second question is, um, somewhere in the presentation, it said something about not having turnarounds, but when I'm looking at this proposed plan, on the top right, it appears that there would, it would require a turnaround, is that?
There, there is, we provided with, in future steps with the PSP and the construction plans, a, a turning plan for fire trucks, trash pickup. The road, the, per the code, the road doesn't have to have a hammerhead or cul-de-sac depending on the length, and we're within that tolerance, uh, which is why that doesn't have, but we have proven with the lift station down there and with fire truck that they can get in and get out. There was other question you had about the entrances on Puffin Road. Um, the two alleyways that are between the regulated units are entrance only, um, so there'll be entrance only from Puffin, but there won't be traffic going back onto Puffin through those roads.
So it's only the middle?
There's, there's, there's technically, there's five connections to Puffin, there's three roads, and then there's two alleyways.
I see.
The alleys are one-way, entrance only, and then you have the three connections to Puffin.
Right, okay. Yeah, I can see the arrows now, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, it looks like there was a build-out date of twenty twenty-eight for this. It said in the documents.
Yes.
When does it start? When's it proposed to start?
Sir, sir, you'll have to come to the microphone. Might want to raise that microphone up a little bit just so it's clearly audible, thank you.
Uh, it's proposed to start whenever we get our construction plans approved, we have to get our zoning, um, which is here tonight. Um, the PSP has to be approved, and then eventually our construction plans will have to be approved. The, you know, and then the developer would like to move forward as soon as possible after that.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, so.
It was the Puffin Road, it was the Puffin Road from before, that was the, the question, so.
All right, at this time, I'd like to allow for public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this ordinance?
Just a reminder, stay close to the mics, I know it's a little awkward tonight, but we want to make sure we have a clean record for our clerk and for the, for the record, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see anybody, so I will close public comment at this time. Do we have any other further discussion questions?
Yes. Part of this, part of this package that came with this showed that it would add traffic burden to North Kusy Road, which is already over capacity, is that correct?
Um, I actually do not know that information, I have not revealed their traffic.
It's like five hundred pages long, but it's in there.
Yeah, and I apologize, I, I, it's literally my second month, so I haven't reviewed the entirety of, of the package, including the traffic impact.
So what is the plan for North Kusy Road, because even though it's a minimal impact, this one's a minimal impact, and the next one's a minimal impact, and the next one's a minimal impact?
The, the T I A is, uh, provided by the traffic consultant who does the reports, have you seen the larger report? Um, it's submitted to the county for review for methodology, it's reviewed, submitted to the city. Um, and any impacts that are needed to be remedied are, are provided in that report. So in that report, it does not show needing to make improvements to North Kusy Road.
And, uh, Mr. Alexander, I'd just like to add that, um, even though I haven't reviewed this particular traffic, uh, impact analysis, uh, what, what we all do whenever there's a project like this is that they have their proportion, proportion share of impacts, right? So they, they do pay for their share of any improvements that are necessary. So, uh, they might not need to do anything right now, but each one of those minor impacts, uh, that you mentioned, they're still paying into the system, and the idea behind, uh, the proportion share is that they, uh, together, all of that will amount to the necessary improvements that we have in North Kusy. And I understand in North Kusy right now, uh, uh, nobody really enjoys it, uh, I myself take it twice every day, uh, but.
That's the same I do, and then we hear, we keep hearing the same thing, but it, it's always the same thing.
Right.
It's always another minor impact and a minor impact.
Well, I think that's, you're right, Russell, that's just the nature of our growth, and that's why the city is making the plans, but this is also the final stage, I mean, we talked about that way back whenever the, the initial one was, was already approved, so.
When we talk about it in the initial one, we talk about that the traffic plan will come when they do the P U D, which is now. Because at that time, when we talking about annexing, we're not supposed to talk about the traffic, because we don't have the reports for the traffic, so now that we do, it just, it seems like you have the sixteen findings that you have to go by, and one of them is, does it adversely affect the neighborhood?
Yeah, every time we add another house on it, it's going to impact some because more people are moving in, but I, I mean, that's why we have the other plans for additional changes. So I don't know how at this point you tell somebody you can't build now because it's your minimal, but the other minimals were okay. I think that's the hard part.
To Russell's point, the, we reviewed the annexation, I don't know if it was annexation or, uh, future land use change a, a year ago or so, and we had concerns then about Puffin Road.
I think we have concerns about every single thing that is being built throughout the city, so.
It's not just that, it's, when you have a community of this size and this many units, it creates a lot more traffic, and, you know, you just have to be concerned about where, how does the traffic get in and out, right?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just in, in looking at the specific language of the factor that, um, Mr. Alexander is referencing, it's the proposed change will create or excessively increase traffic congestion or otherwise affect public safety. That's the, that's the wording of that particular element, so for. That's the wording of that particular element, so for whatever discussion amongst the members that might generate.
Right, so minimal impact is different from those statements, which is, I think, why it's difficult to do what we do.
I'll agree with the fact that it's difficult for you all to do what you do.
It is. I do want to applaud the applicant for how far this development has come since we saw it first, you know? So I definitely think it's come a long way. Could you answer, the applicant had said that there was a requirement to tie into, I think it's called Goldcrest Drive?
Yeah, so Goldcrest Drive, it's to the west of this property. I can, I think it's easier if I show you the aerial photo.
What is the requirement in the Land Development Code?
So whenever we do, whenever we do, it might not be necessarily in the Land Development Code, but it's certainly in our policies. Whenever we provide for new communities, we always, number one, try to provide a grid system, which is, St. Cloud is much more fortunate than many of our other central Florida communities, that we have an example that we can point to of the benefits of having a greeted system in our state's streets. So what we do is we require new development to, number one, provide reasonable-sized blocks and connectivity. Number two, if there is already a stub out there, we require new development to continue that grid. And that's what you see here in this aerial photo. You see that there's a stub out to the east of the community next door, and what they are doing is they're completing that connection. So the difference here, and since we're talking about traffic, is that the more connections we provide, the less of a bottleneck effect you have. The reason Narcoussi is as bad as it is is because you take 300 homes and you dump them all into one system or one entry point, and that's how you end up with those traffic congestion points, right? So our expectation is that by providing this distributed grid, even though it doesn't look like much at this scale, is that here you have potentially five or six different alternatives to go to different places, right? So if Puffin Road is congested, I can go take the back road, go to the other community, and get off on the north side, right? So that is the rationale between these connectivity requirements.
Thank you.
I think to Russell's point, he's saying that most, everybody is going to go out that way, is what you're saying. Because otherwise, you're cutting through other properties, so to speak.
And the reason you are is because obviously that road is working. So if that road was not working, somebody at some point will do the calculation, either you or your GPS will do for you, to decide on a different route, right?
I mean, the other thing that we can do as a, just a volunteer recommendation group, is we can always, sorry, staff, not necessarily approve it, but let our council make that decision and tell them why, what our concern is. So that makes us feel better as a team, that we're raising some of the biggest issues that we think our community and our residents are talking about. Maybe that's just something that just gives the city council something to think about.
I noticed that the preliminary master plan showed some improvements to Lillian Lee Road. Is that, is that supposed to happen? I know it's not part of this, but it appeared to show a median and a larger widening of Lillian Lee?
It shows that's currently under construction, under a different project.
Okay.
So that shows what ultimately Lillian Lee is going to look like. So currently, that road is under construction, and the median's being put in, and the second lane is being added.
Okay.
If I could, just to Ms. Grigsby's point on, with regard to action on these zoning issues, I think the best course is for whatever motion is forwarded and decided upon, that in the event that the commission, in any case, were to find that they were not in favor of a particular application, they would cite the specific element or elements that they felt justified their motion against the application. That will, if that's a motion that then carries the day for the commission, that will carry to the council when they consider the case at the future time.
For instance, if you disagreed with one of the 16 findings.
Correct. I mean, that's why when you're moving, as an example of approval, you're always saying you've considered the 16 findings that are moving for approval, which suggests clearly the 16 findings have been considered and are satisfied to the movement's perspective. So conversely, if you're going to move for denial, I think clearly for the applicant and for the council, you would need to specify what element or elements in your motion failed to meet your satisfaction. So recommendation to the commission members.
If I could add to anything, as far as the traffic study that's submitted, you know, you talk about a major change to Narcoussi Road. All that's in the report that this doesn't cause a major change. If you were to deny this project because there's traffic on Narcoussi, that's because Narcoussi and the Turnpike are the only north-south roads that go towards Orlando. If you're going to deny this one because of traffic on Narcoussi, are you going to deny every single project that goes out towards Harmony, that goes south on Coop Creek? You know, all of those projects are also going to take Narcoussi to get to Orlando, or to Lake Nona. So if this one's going to be denied for that, then every other project in St. Cloud will need to be denied.
Mr. Chairman, just, obviously, when you decide to close the discussion for the commission to deliberate, you can make that announcement to the applicant, the staff, and to the public.
Sure. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay. I'd like to call for motion at this time.
I apologize. Have we called for public comment? Did we do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So this, just to remind everybody, this is ordinance number 2025-67 Harvest Grove.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-67, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I second.
All right. I have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor of recommending approval, say aye.
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 All for recommending denial, say no.
No.
No. Motion passes 3-2.
Yes, sir. Recommendation of approval passes 3 to 2. Ms. Grigsby, motion seconded by Ms. Douglas.
All right. Next is ordinance number 2025-70, called Riva's Edge, and this is PUD 23-00003. Applicants requesting a planned unit development approval of a combined preliminary master plan, preliminary master plan known as Riva's Edge.
Once again, Marcus Bastian, Deputy Director. At the request of the applicant, this case is actually being continued to November 18th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, with planning city council scheduled for December 11th, 2025, at 6:30 PM.
All right, thank you for letting us know. So yeah, if you're here for ordinance number 2025-70, it's not going to be read tonight. It will be read in November.
I'm sorry, ma'am, the commission's here to hear the cases. It's okay. You can speak to staff afterwards or at a time or break, but the commission, thank you.
Good evening. Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development. The case before you tonight is for a comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment known as Cave-in Corner.
All right, let me read it in real quick, because I haven't read this one in. That's okay. So this is ordinance number 2025-72, Cave-in Corner, and it's CPA 25-00009. So it's a comprehensive plan amendment.
Do we wish to, Mr. Chairman, does the staff wish to go with both items?
Yes.
For the same presentation?
Okay, you can do that. All right, so the second one is ordinance number 2025-73, and this is for a zoning map amendment, and the number is ZMA 25-00013.
Good evening. Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development. This project before you tonight is for a comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment known as Cave-in Corner. Ordinance number 2025-72 and 2025-73. Currently, the future land use is medium-density residential with a pending future land use of commercial. The existing zoning is R2 single-family, single and two-family dwelling, with a proposed zoning of B.C. business commercial. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no impacts on city facilities. Here is a graphic, here's a graphic representation of the future land use, as well as a graphic representation of the zoning. Honor before September 25th, 2025, staff recommends approval. Likewise, it is recommended that the planning commission also recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-72 and 2025-73. The staff and the agent are available for questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present and would you like to speak? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, commission members. Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering, 2017, 13th Street, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769, here representing the application. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation of approval for both the CPA and ZMA, and respectfully request the commission's recommendation for approval as well tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we go back just a couple of slides to the... Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I understood the location of this.
The satellite, can I see the satellite picture? What's there now?
I was going to say, is this, this is residential now, the current zoning?
Yes, so currently it is residential, but it's commercial as well.
Are we up for questions? Can we ask what's the plan? What are you doing with it?
So from staff's understanding, they will be becoming commercial, and they are working with staff right now to undergo a reduced list of uses that better suit that location due to a budding commercial as well as the residential.
Okay. May we ask the applicant what your plan is?
Good evening. Jeremy Kibler again, KDA Engineering. So the current plan at the moment, the expectation would be professional office and kind of a specialty retail type of setting. I did also just wanted to note that there are currently two single-family residential homes, which comprise the subject property, and the remaining balance of this block, it is, you know, a complete block, is already commercial. So we're kind of making it uniform and kind of would complement the uses that are already in place there. Happy to answer any of the questions. Thank you.
I think we were just a little confused with all the cars that were being stored there in the satellite image.
Well, I'm familiar with that street. I probably go down it every day. It's majority commercial. I mean, lots of business and commercial and stuff on that road, right? So it kind of makes sense what they're doing, but yeah, you're right. It's like...
If I may, for a second, we went through lengthy discussions about this particular site. It's a fairly small site, and that's sort of the source of a lot of the issues that we had with it, because it is a transition between what you see in your map there, which is yellow, that becomes residential. This is kind of the last block, and it has transitioned from those residential home, residential properties to what is essentially commercial. As you said, Ms. Kipsey, the north is already commercial. And the issue that they had was that to do the proper zoning here, the most appropriate zoning would be professional, if we did them as professional office. The problem with the professionals, they require half an acre, and they happen to have only .42 acres, if I'm not mistaken. So we had to find a category that, number one, they could actually comply with the requirements of that zoning category. And that happens to be the business commercial. The issue with business commercial is that allows them to do more than would be appropriate for that transition between homes and offices. So what we did is we had a lot of back and forth with the applicant and their assistance and collaboration to find the list of uses that we both agreed on, that staff was comfortable with, and that they fulfilled what they wanted to develop. And so that list, I believe, is provided with your staff report. We're going to continue to clean up that and present to the city council.
So I just want to make sure I'm super clear. You mean to tell me that our city staff, the city of St. Cloud, worked in conjunction with the applicant, instead of saying no, actually came up with a plan that everybody is happy with?
Despite what the common perception is, we usually like to do that.
I really love hearing that. I really do.
We're not in the business of denying things. We try to help people do the proper things.
Great. That is music to my ears.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we open for public comment? Okay, at this time, I would like to allow for public comment. Does anybody in the audience have any comments on ordinance number 2025-72 or 2025-73? Okay. Appears that nobody does, so I will close the public comment session. At this time, do we have any other questions or discussion? Okay, I'd like to call for a motion.
Okay. I would like to make, I would like to make a motion, sorry. I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number CPA 25-0009, sorry, 2025-72, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to recommend approval by member Douglas, and we have a second by member Alexander. All in favor to recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-72 and 73, say aye.
Just the first case.
Okay, sorry. I'll do one at a time.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, ordinance number 2025-72 passes 5-0. Ordinance number 2025-73.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-73, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Second. I second.
Okay, we have a motion by member Douglas to recommend approval, and we have a second by member Bridge... I'm sorry, what's your last name?
Bridgeforth.
Bridgeforth. All in favor of recommending approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, next we have ordinance number 2025-74, which is Nova Road Community Center. And we have two other ordinances. I assume you would like me to read them together, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one is requesting consideration of a voluntary annexation, and this is ANX 25-00018. The second one is ordinance number 2025-75, and this is a comprehensive plan amendment. The number is CPA 25-00018. The number is CPA two-five dash zero 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 eight. And the third one is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seven-six, which is a zoning map amendment. The number is ZMA two-five dash zero 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 one-two. And once again, this is for Nova Road Community Center.
Good evening, Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development. The case before you tonight is for an ex, a voluntary annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning map amendment known as Nova Road Community Center, Center. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seven-four, twenty twenty-five dash seven-five and twenty twenty-five dash seven-six. This area is contiguous and reason, and reasonably compact, in line with Florida State Statute one-seven-one point zero four-four. As well as it is located within a joint planning area boundary and contiguous to city limits. The current future land use is Community Center County. The pending future land use will be Commu- Community Center City. The existing zoning is CR Commercial Restricted and RS-three Residential Single Family County. We are proposing CCC Community Center Core City. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here is a graphic representation of the future land use. As well as a graphic representation of the zoning. Honor before September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, staff recommends approval. Likewise, it is requested that the planning commission also recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seven-four, twenty twenty-five dash seven-five and twenty twenty-five dash seven-six. Staff is available for questions and so is the agent.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council John Adams, RJWA Inc., Eight Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, three four seven four one. Uh, we're in agreement with staff's report and recommendation for approval of all three of these applications. We respectfully ask that you all make that recommendation tonight as well for all three. Be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
All right, do we have any questions for the applicant? Is this intended to be just your normal community center that you would see? Just curious.
Uh, so right now, it's, uh, currently got future land use of Community Center in the county and it's got two preceding zoning districts. So if this was not a part of your JPA, it would only be going through the zoning application to Community Center Core, which is the same request we're making tonight. Uh, that does, you know, that zoning district does allow residential. I can tell you my client does want to market it as commercial. Uh, to the south of this on the aerial, it did show undeveloped land, but it is an existing apartment complex that is a part of the adopted Community Center as well. This is on the corner of Lake Lizzie Drive and Nova Road, which Nova Road is a county framework road with a two-hundred-foot right-of-way. It's, uh, currently in study. I know that there is gonna be, at least the last plans that I've seen, a four-way intersection at Lake Lizzie and Nova Road. So it still is on the corner of a main corridor which is in compliance with your comp plan for your Community Center. But as far as the final use, I can't tell you that. That would come at later applications, uh, in front of this council.
Thank you.
So is the word "Community Center" a generic term?
So it's a land use. Uh, there's different land uses that the city's now adopted with their latest comprehensive plan. There's neighborhood centers, community centers, urban centers, employment centers. So the Community Center is a little bit larger than a neighborhood center, smaller than an urban center and not an employment center. So there's different sizes, uh, and requirements for those land uses and the zoning districts attached to them.
Maybe city staff could provide a quick definition of Community Center versus Neighborhood Center, maybe?
I think Mr. Ryan already did an excellent job of that. The reality is, uh, that the, as you may recall, uh, we just brought you a future land use not too long ago, right? A couple of months ago. Um, and the one overriding thing in St. Cloud was the deficit of employment destinations, right? What we are doing with the future land use is that we have all the centers. And again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, um, as, uh, Mr. Ryan mentioned, um, or Ryan, sorry, uh, mentioned is that we go from, uh, community centers to urban centers to the employment centers. And each one of those, uh, has very specific thresholds. Uh, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they increase in density and they increase in intensity. Uh, they also increase in physical size. Inside of those centers, uh, you have the neighborhoods and you have the cores, right? So, uh, or the core and perimeter. And the idea is that between core, which is what this is, uh, and the perimeter, the density or the intensity of that development also decreases. This, uh, to be really appreciated, uh, you would have to go back to the actual full future land use map and take a look at it because it's part of a much larger component. Uh, south of where this is, uh, there's gonna be additional educational facilities and commercial that is part of the entire node that is around that area. So, um, we could go into detail, I, if, if you guys would like to do that. Uh, we would love to give you an other presentation specifically about those. Uh, but the reality is that this case here tonight is just asking for, number one, annexing it. Number two, making sure that the designation that we're giving them for future land use and zoning is consistent with what we just did, uh, get approved. And not only that, but whilst with what we coordinated extensively with the county. Uh, and then the rest of the application is gonna come once that gets approved.
Thank you. Just to clarify there, you said south of this is school. It's north though, isn't it?
Uh, well, no, so additional development south of this. So you can see that there's the apartment complex that is showing in the hash area there and the, in the, uh, with the, um, hatch pattern. And if you go farther south, uh, then there's additional commercial development and then across, um, is that Thirteenth? Uh, no, one ninety-two, yes. So once, to the south side of ninety-two, one ninety-two, there's another, uh, large amount of land that has, uh, similar designation.
Okay, all right.
You were thinking the school, right, which is the other direction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
So we're just taking it from county back to, to city, basically, but the same kind of intensity?
That is, that is what it comes down to. We're making sure that it's consistent with everything that we discussed with the county in the past, yes.
All right, do we have any other questions before we open public comment?
Community Center is required to have some commercial with it or some kind of a public facility or facility for the residents? Or can it be either or?
I haven't read the St. Cloud code yet, uh, 'cause I, I don't believe it's been published yet. Uh, but I do know they plan to adopt all the city standards in the county. And in the urban infill centers in the county and their core specifically requires a minimum of four thousand square feet. If, for instance, we wanted to build all residential here, we'd either have to build, uh, four thousand feet per acre. So for instance, this is six acres, so we'd need roughly twenty-four thousand square feet set aside or shown at the same time with vertical improvements as a mixed-use development, uh, core. So, uh, and back to the standards that were asked in the core, uh, the FAR is a point-five minimum with a one-point-oh maximum. So forty-three, roughly forty-three hundred square feet and an acre. So you're looking at about half that is the minimum requirement of commercial if they do choose to build commercial on top of that stipulation of the four thousand feet per acre set aside.
Okay.
All right, at this time, I'd like to allow for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on either of these three ordinances? Twenty twenty-five dash seven-two, seven-three or seven, I'm sorry, seven-four, seven-five or seven-six?
We have someone in the audience. Maybe you can come to the podium and...
Yes, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And did you fill out a form, one of these? You can, you can fill it out after you're done speaking, but you do need to fill one out.
My name is Kristen Snyder. My address is five-five-one-five Lake Lizzie Drive.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Margaret Fish and I'm at five, fifty-five oh one, Lake Lizzie Drive. And we back up this property that you're addressing.
Ma'am, ma'am, move the microphone to your, so we can hear you.
I have a, a question regarding this civic center that's supposed to be built on this property. Um, say suppose at the end of whatever, somebody changes their mind and they decide to build something else on there, can they do that? Okay, right now they're saying a civic center is what's going on that land. But what if down the line they decide they want to put something else there? Like a service area for, uh, core?
Ma'am, the commission will take your comments and they'll accept your question as a rhetorical question, but they want your feedback, but they're not here to respond to your, to your questions. You can speak with staff after the presentation of the cases this evening, but just need to hear your feedback at this time for its public comment.
Okay.
So here's the thing, is that property is half commercial and half residential. And then the property that's next to them is the same. It just has it on the front side of the property along Nova that is, um, commercial. They want to put it all to city and all commercial. However, this is a residential area. It's, everyone has their own little plots around that area. And they want to build a community center, however, with apartments being right there and this being here. They already have their amenities, so there's what, ten people or like ten homes down the street that will go to their quote-unquote "community center"? But there's other things going on in that area that we can't even support down the road. We can't turn on left onto, uh, Nova Road from Lake Lizzie without waiting five minutes. There's, you can't even see around Drewliner. They redid the road down Lake Lizzie, but they put the curbs so close together that you can't even make a left onto Drewliner, which would be where the address is. Um, the road is not there to support it. They did widen Lake Lizzie in the beginning, but then it narrows right past Drewliner. So all around, there's not enough room to be allowing cars to come in and out. Drewliner is a very narrow road as well.
Could we bring up the map just so I can understand the area?
So Lake Lizzie right there, you can see up until the property line, that is widened when they did the apartment complex. However, going down Drewliner, which will lead into Nova Road, is very narrow. The properties cannot support that much cars coming in and out.
Not only that, but it... That road cannot support, um, large trucks, uh, commercial trucks, uh, with construction going on. So that road really is not for use.
For commercial land.
For commercial land.
Thank you for your comments.
Nope. Okay, thank you.
Need you to fill out those forms and submit them to the clerk, uh, that you spoke and with your information.
Okay, they're at the table. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you address their questions, I just want to ask if there's anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on either of these three ordinances, seventy-four, seventy-five or seventy-six? Okay, so I will close public comment at this time. Uh, would you like to address some of their concerns, questions?
Again, for the record, John Adams, RJWA Inc., uh, a couple of things that were questioned there. Community Center, not a civic center, but one of the things I want to bring up tonight, that this is policy alignment. There's already existing community center land use in the county. Again, if this wasn't a part of your JPA, both those zoning districts that exist in the county are preceding zoning districts. It would go through just the ZMA process. Tonight, it's going through your annexation due to your JPA aligned with future land use that was just adopted by city council a couple of weeks ago and the zoning district that aligns with it. What this is not tonight is not approval of any buildings, traffic volumes, drainage plans. That all comes at a later stage with those uses that goes through a full staff review and then comes through the public hearing process as well. So their concerns would be able to be addressed at a later date, but tonight is simply policy alignment with the adopted future land use maps. And we're required by state statute to bring the zoning districts in compliance with that future land use map. And as far as the traffic, again, this is much later on down the road. I was out there personally to put a sign in the ground. The north side of Lake Lizzie Drive right now is this curb. Any future development would have to improve that to full cross-section. So it would be putting drainage in on that north side. Right now, it's an interim cross-section, so there would be likely be widened a little bit and there would be a sidewalk going out to there. Uh, the cross-section for Nova Road that's currently under, um, county study right now, uh, that I last saw was, uh, two-hundred-five, two-hundred-foot right-of-way with drainage wells, twelve-foot multi-use trails on each side and a divided four-lane road going each way with a full median break at Lake Lizzie. Will that be a lighted intersection that's subject to a TIA much further down the road?
And for the commercial use, you would still have to get a final master plan approved by the city council, correct?
Yes, here's, uh, construction plans come through the public hearing process. So whatever that use is, and there's a long list of uses allowed in the community centers, uh, that vary. So, you know, ultimately, until they have a user, I can't tell you what it is, but I can tell you there's a lot of lists or a lot of uses in your land development code.
Thank you.
Thank you once again, Marcus Boshin. I just want to clarify a couple of things too because, um, in the public comment, uh, it was mentioned that, uh, it's a community center or civic center. I think that there's a little bit of a confusion between what a land use category is and what a building type is. Uh, I, I'm quite sure all of you also understood that. So, uh, this community center is a mixed-use land use designation that includes a lot of different things. And what we're doing today is not approving a project. We're approving the land use that would allow a project to occur. So, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And I think that's just how difficult it is for our residents and the city, the citizens because terminology can mean very different things. So thank you for, again, for that clarity.
Planners have not been known for their, uh, common language capabilities.
And this is relatively new, right?
Yes, even for us, yes.
The idea of, obviously, mixed use has been around for a while, but employment center, community center, terms like that are relatively new, right?
Yes, and even, uh, even for us, uh, it's, it's something that literally has been approved two weeks ago on the ninth, right? So we're all gonna have some growing pains and, uh, so everybody understands what we're trying to do. But overall, uh, as I already mentioned, what we're trying to do is increase opportunity for, uh, non-residential development and additional employment.
But I think we'd also, questions like this tonight also help us to develop better communication when you all are putting things out to the community, so...
Thank you.
Is this the first application for a community center?
I believe so. Yeah, I believe so.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions, discussion? Okay. So for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seven-four, which is ANX two-five dash zero 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 one-eight, would someone like to, I'd like to call for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number two-zero-two-five dash seven-four based on the sixteen findings within the Land Development Code.
Okay, we have a motion by member Grexby to approve or recommend approval. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a second by member Bridgeforth. All in favor of recommending approval, say aye.
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 Motion passes five-zero. Okay, now we have ordinance number two, twenty twenty-five dash seven, s- I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five dash seven-five. Okay, now we have ordinance number two, twenty-two-five dash seven, I'm sorry, twenty-two-five dash seven-five. And this, this is the comprehensive plan amendment, CPA two-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-eight.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash seven-five, based on the sixteen findings in the land development code.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend approval by member Grexby, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by member Douglas. All in favor of recommending approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Now we have ordinance number twenty-two-five dash seven-six. This is the zoning map amendment, number ZMA two-five dash zero-zero-zero-one-two.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number two-zero-two-five dash seven-six, based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
We have a motion by member Grexby to recommend approval, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by member Alexander, it's a second. All in favor of recommending approval, say aye.
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 Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Uh, next we have ordinance number twenty-two-five dash seven-nine. This is for employment, commercial, land development code update. And this is number CDA two-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero-four.
Well, once again, Marcus Bastian, development director, uh, I'm sorry, deputy director of community development. And Ms. Crispy, Grebski? Grebski, sorry. If you thought that we were in the weeds five minutes ago, let's really get into the weeds now. Because what we're about to talk is the land development code update. So to give everybody an overview, what we just did as we've been talking is that we approved a completely revamped future land use map and future land use policies. Those are the future land use element that are part of the comprehensive plan. All of those changes, they have to be actually implemented through a code, through the land development code. So what we're talking here is essentially the difference between future land use and zoning, right? We need to make sure that all of those policies that we write in the comprehensive plan get implemented through an actual zoning, zoning regulations. So what you have in front of you here is one of those updates that has to do with the commercial, employment commercial. And this specific designation has to do with one district in the zoning code that is named the employment commercial, right? Now, I know you heard centers and all of these different centers that we have and, and the different scales and the employment future land use. The employment commercial is a very specific designation that allows us to develop something that the county actually started the process with the, what is being called the Nell City South property, and we're gonna talk about that property later. But we need to create an entire category in the land use code to, I'm sorry, in the, in the zoning code, in the land, land development code, to accommodate that designation. So what I'm about to tell you here is the amendments that we're doing through articles through to sixteen to allow that employment commercial to happen. So on article two, we actually updated table three to one to show the assigned zoning and broaden the zoning categories to include that code. Uh, we added zoning districts that correspond to the updated future land use designations, and those are the, all of these JPA categories. So, you know, we were just talking about one of those cases where we, we had something that came from the county and that we adopted the same coordinated policies and requirements. And so in front of you here, you have like the JPA LDR, which is the equivalent of their county LDR. The MDI, which is medium density and intensity. The EC, which is employment commercial, NCC, neighborhood center, Cor, and then neighborhood center. And I'm blanking on the M, so I'll get back to you in a second. As I said, all, this is all new things to us. Uh, and community center Cor, community center perimeter, urban center Cor, urban center perimeter, and employment center Cor perimeter as well. So the difference between, again, the C and the P at the end is just intensity that we want to make sure that we have transition between what's in the center of development and versus what's transitioning to something less intense. Now, what you see here is that table three to one that we were mentioning adds a lot of these uses. I, looking back, I should have, should have highlighted the ones that are changing, but you can see right halfway through the table, you see JPA LDR. And that's a single-family dwelling district that goes through, it's essentially the district that is a residential district, right? So give me just one second, I'm gonna NCM here, because I want to make sure that I, oh, the JPA, JPA is infill center, infill center district, and it's a mix of uses. So I'm not gonna bore you with every one of those items, but it should be also in your staff report, and if you have any questions, we can talk about specific categories. Under article six, we updated the commercial zoning districts to add the employment center commercial, employment for, employment commercial district. And what that does is that it expands in diversified employment opportunities within the city and makes sure that they're consistent with the county. And then requests for the, this particular zoning are only permitted, and this is extremely important, they're only permitted with support from the city of Saint Cloud or Osceola County in the state, right? The reason for this is that this is kind of a very attractive district. Uh, we don't want that to be misused by development that then ends up doing something else that is not intended use of the code. So this particular designation is specifically for publicly initiated projects, such as the Nell City South that we're gonna talk in a second. The property shall also consist of a number of contiguous properties that meet the following criteria. That is adjacent to arterial or higher, that contain at least a hundred acres, and it's not located already in a mixed use of master plan area where the JPA infill center zoning may not be appropriate. The key thing here is that there are other categories for a lot of the development that has mixed use. We don't want this to preempt that type of development. Still on article six, commercial zoning districts, this will also require master planning. Because this is such an open-ended designation, that we need to make sure that, that any project that comes forward not only is either publicly initiated or publicly supported, but also has a very clear idea of what we're trying to develop there. Reason being, again, that we don't want to have any kind of bait and switch situation that is a developer that comes to us and promises a lot of things and then decides halfway through it to switch, which is the concern you just heard about, you know, five minutes ago. So those requirements will have, those master plan, the master plan documentation will require requirements for the lot sizes, the yards, the heights, densities, parking configuration, even signage and so forth. Still on article six, three, three-six-seven, we have amended that to have a list of what permitted uses will be allocated to commercial districts. And so we updated the permitted use table to include the EC zoning. Under article fourteen, we updated the communication tower facility regulations and updated the general requirements. So essentially, new towers and tenants under communication facilities shall be considered permitted use within, and everything that you see on this slide is already existing, it's part of the code. We're just adding in employment commercial categories. Now, those, communication towers are still, they have their own little corner in the code. There are additional requirements, minimum separation, there's like all sorts of requirements if you are going to develop a cell tower, communications tower, cell tower, or any kind of a development of that kind, right? Article fifteen, we updated just fences, wall, and hedges. An employment commercial shall follow the same requirements as the highway business, neighborhood business districts one and two and professional districts. Sixteen, signage, and the employment commercial shall follow the same requirements as the highway business and business commercial. Again, just to summarize, all of this is just to make sure that we have the corresponding coordination between the, all the policies that we just approved two weeks ago and what the land development code says, and allows us to implement those policies and map designations. On that, so staff recommends approval, or staff has recommended before, on or before September twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-five approval, and our requested action is for approval.
Okay, thank you. Questions, do we have any questions? Uh, I do have a question. I believe it was article six, few slides back, it said that there was a requirement for two or more arterial roads. Was that for employment commercial or employment center?
That is for employment commercial designation. And I promise you, I promise you that's gonna make a whole lot of sense about five slides from now on the next case. Because employment commercial is this designation for the development of Nell City South, right? And what we want, whenever we create something like that, that is purpose-driven, we want to make sure that we have the requirements kind of buttoned down. Because what you don't want is for every smart developer out there to start finding loopholes and saying, hey, guys, but you allow this. So part of that is, we want to make sure, number one, and that's why the very first requirement here is like, hey, it has to be publicly initiated or publicly supported, right? That already narrows down a whole lot. But the unemployment size, employment center of the size that we're talking about requires a lot of infrastructure. So it does not make sense for us to not do that next to where transportation infrastructure already is, exists. Because what we don't want is to end up with something in the boonies with that now creates a whole lot of demand in a place that does not have any infrastructure in it. So that road requirement has to do with this.
I agree. Wait, I'm sorry, go back to that slide, I just had a question about the last bullet point about, that it's not located with any mixed-use master plan area or where JPA infill center zoning may not be appropriate. So that's basically saying that you wouldn't be able to do employment commercial district in an area that's being infilled.
Yes.
That's, say, around residential or contiguous with residential or something like that.
Exactly. So, so what this is saying is, well, not only that, that, that it's like the appropriateness of the location, but also the appropriateness of the designation. If there is something already that is in our general regulations for those infill centers, that is your first recourse, right? That we should not use this as our first record, this is a very specific designation. So in other words, this is a plan B after plan A is not appropriate, right? So first, let's go to the designations that are already coordinated with the county. But in cases like the Nell City South, which again, is gonna be the next case, once we are done with this particular presentation here, you're gonna see that that is for the development of the Nell City South. Which, again, it has been started by our partners at Orange County. They invested a lot of time and money on this, a lot of time and resources on this, and so we want to make sure that we support that development.
What is the difference between an employment commercial district and an employment center?
Employment commercial district is bigger and it's gonna be a higher intensity and also a different approval process. So what you're gonna see with this is that a lot of the, a lot of the effort here is to streamline potential employment opportunities. If somebody comes and it's an extremely attractive proposition, right? And I'm gonna say high-tech employment that one headquarters that would be located here, let's say, that that's hypothetical, right? Our processes tend to be very deliberate and slow. And by the time we get the approval process done, the opportunity has gone away. These things move really fast. So the employment center designation, part of what it's doing is also streamlining all of those approvals. So it's not only a different designation, it's a, it's a higher level of, I'm gonna say importance, I don't know if that's the right word, but.
Scrutiny?
Uh, well, yeah, there's scrutiny too, but, but it's, it's a higher level of priority in our strategic planning, right? For economic development purposes, for employment purposes, and also it transcends the boundaries of Saint Cloud, right? It's when, it's those regional employers that both the county and the city want to attract to, to our general area.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. No other questions? All right. Public comment, I'd like to allow for public comment at this time. Do we have any, anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on ordinance number twenty-two-five dash seven-nine? All right, I don't see anybody, I'm sorry, would you like to make a comment, a public comment?
Yeah, hi, chairman, planning commissioners, I'm Dave Tomac with Osceola County. Yeah, so the, the real difference between employment commercial and employment center, employment center allows a mixture of uses, res, high-density residential, different commercial-type uses. Employment commercial is strictly for jobs and services. So we're not proposing any residential in this employment commercial zoning. It's, the other, the other big difference is this will allow some of those bigger industrial buildings.
You're speaking to the final agenda item tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we're just not there yet.
The zoning district is what allows it. So, so where your employment center is providing for this mixture of uses, these tight grids, the employment commercial is more for larger employment-type businesses and buildings.
Understood.
So that's the, that's the key difference.
Thank you.
But we do appreciate you all looking at it.
All right, I don't think we have any public comments, so we'll close the public comment session.
I just want to say that I spent about twenty minutes babbling here and about thirty seconds is had, much more than I did, so.
I was confused, Mr. Tomac, I thought you were with the city, now you're with the county. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on this ordinance? No?
Every, every, everything that would be built there would have to still be gone through a separate review. They couldn't build a fifty-story building there, they couldn't, everything would have to go through another review once, once they decided what they're doing with whatever property was listed as employment commercial.
I'm sorry, I think I missed a question.
There's no.
This is just amending the articles, the, in the code, so. It's the, this is the case, agenda item I, amending articles two through sixteen. So it's, there's not a particular project before you, it's the language in the code that's being amended and updated. They're just looking, they're looking for a recommendation of approval for this change.
I don't like it when they change anything.
Well, welcome to Saint Cloud, everything changes. But the, the key thing here is, as Mr. Tomac just said, it's, what we're doing here is part one of two. What we're doing is creating here the framework, the policies to allow something to happen, right? And that something is literally the next project that you're gonna be, we're gonna be talking about.
My question, my question was, being that you're creating another district, the rules that go along with that district, what actually would be able to be put in that kind of a district was, was my question, but it's, doesn't matter.
Well, we, we do have already rules in place, because you just saw that some of the articles that we're allowing are, that, for instance, signage will, will be the same as some of our commercial districts, right? But also that we require master planning. So if a project came along, or any came along, it will be, you are very familiar with a PUD, right? So think of, and I don't want to mischaracterize here, because it's not the same as a PUD, but there will be a master planning effort on that.
So it's, yeah, a lot of what it broke down to was I. So it's, yeah, a lot of what it broke down to was I, I see the chart and I see where it says like maximum building height and it's not applicable. So that tells me that.
Yes, and that is, that is intentional.
Somebody's going to look at it before that happens.
That is intentional, and the reason is that the whole goal of this district, and I could probably let our Osceola County folks also speak on that, is that the intent is to have something that is flexible enough, that will allow us to do the development without having, having the development tripped into things like the height or things like a setback. Because what happens is, because this is publicly initiated or publicly supported, we have the confidence that we're going to be doing joint planning between county and city, and we're going to put those regulations in place that will be project-specific, right? So it doesn't mean that there is no regulation. What it means is that it's going to be regulated at a master plan level.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. I'd like to call for a motion for ordinance number 2025-79 for CDA 25-00004.
I would like to make, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-79 based on the 16.
Per the changes proposed.
Per the changes proposed by staff.
Okay. We have a motion by Member Grigsby recommending approval of the changes to the land development code. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second by Member Bridgeforth. All in favor of approval, recommending approval, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. All right, that brings us to our last action item of the night, which is ordinance number 2025-80, Neo City South. This is a zoning map amendment request, and the number is ZMA 25-00016.
Once again, Marcus Boshian Development Deputy, Deputy Director of Community Development. I think I exhausted my quote of words today, so I apologize. Now, this is what we just got the framework for, right? So what you're looking here is where we're, we have named, or our partners at the county have named Neo City South. And it's a property with approximately 327 acres just west of the Turnpike. And what this property does is that it allows us to apply that EC designation that we were just discussing. Now, the background of this property is that it's going to be a future land use of, in fact, it's already a future land use of employment center, that this was already approved as part of our future land use amendment. What it is today is that it's an agricultural, an agricultural existing zoning with the city, and we are proposing to change that zoning, so this is the consideration before you hear, for change to employment commercial category, the one that we literally just discussed. The development is considered to be compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impact on city facilities. On the next slide, you're going to see aerial image of the site and immediate surroundings. The site is bisected or is framed by Cross Prairie Parkway and Southbury Drive. The future land use that used to be in that designation prior to our changes to the future land use was medium-density residential, as you can see in this image. And with the future land use, this has changed, changed to JPA EC or EC, right? So that is the JPA category that we have for employment centers. The existing zoning for the property is agricultural, and what we are bringing to you tonight is the change to EC. Now, before I go to the staff recommendations, or actually, I'm just going to finish the staff recommendations, but I also would like to give the opportunity to our county friends to, anything else that you would like to present? No? Okay, right? Well, let me just say that this, on or before September 29th, 2025, staff has evaluated this proposal and recommends the approval of zoning map amendment 25-016 with the following conditions. Number one is that the realignment of Cross Prairie Parkway and Southbury Drive and any related lot configurations may be administratively approved by the city manager or the designee in order to expedite the review process for the construction of these framework roads. Let me give you a little bit of a background. Again, the whole purpose here is that if there are minor alignment changes, in order to make sure that these roads are functioning with the overall site, that we don't have to go through a lengthy, like year-long process just to, you know, move a road or realign lot lines inside of this property. So that's intent here. And with that, the planning, the requested action for the planning commission is the approval of ZMA 25-016 with the conditions stated by staff.
Thank you.
John Adams, RJWA 8 Broadway, Kissimmee Flora, 34741. We're in agreement with staff's recommendation for approval, be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
I'm not sure about the location. Can we go back to the map? So Neo City South is the one that's.
It's the.
Tucked into Kissimmee Park Road, et cetera, back.
So on the left side of the map, that's the C-31 Canal, and to the left of that is Tohoku. And to the south of this, where it says mix down there, that's the urban center. And that kind of, well, the big white spot along the east side of that is the Turnpike. And that jagged piece just below the A there on the bottom of the map, that's the Nolte Interchange. It's currently under construction right now on the Florida Turnpike. So this is just north of it, and then that line that meanders through the site and goes up to the east side of the Turnpike and then cuts over to Tohoku is the Cross Prairie Connection that's currently built to the C-31 Canal and Tohoku, and working its way north through developments down on Clay Whaley Road, and then will be coming up through the urban center and that new Nolte interchange on the Turnpike. So there's no, there's no way to get to it right now, so that road needs to be built.
Thank you. I'm like looking at all those roads going, I have no concept of that.
If you drive through.
Because there, I finally found Neptune Road, and I was totally turned around. So now I see.
So that's on the east side of the Turnpike, that's Chatham Development off Canoe Creek. All those houses with the big pond on the east side of the Turnpike or the right side of the Turnpike.
Well, Anthem Park I found.
Anthem Park, yes.
Okay. I found Anthem, and, okay, so I have to flip it around in my view.
All right, so forgive my confusion here, but we are requesting consideration of a zoning map amendment to employment commercial in the city. My understanding is that we have to have two or more arterial roads?
So the two arterial roads is Cross Prairie Parkway on the east side, and then that other meandering line is South, Southbury Drive. That's the other framework road through Tohoku on the north, or the northwest side or the left side that will continue down through the urban center, and it sort of runs parallel to Cross Prairie Parkway throughout the mixed-use district.
Okay, so I, I'm not, I don't know the exact definition of an arterial road off the top of my head.
They're on the Osceola County Transportation Network maps are considered framework roads. And what those essentially are is, you know, through residential districts, they're wider, they have bike lanes, they have on-street parking, you can't have house driveways, you have to have rear-loaded product, you have access separation. Essentially, those roads are designed to move traffic, and they're created in parallel grid systems. So this Southbury Drive runs parallel to Cross Prairie Parkway. So once it's all developed out, if there's traffic on Cross Prairie, you take Southbury and so on and so forth, and all the interconnectivity throughout the mixed-use district that's to the northwest of here and to the south of here.
So there's currently no driveways that go to either Southbury Drive or Cross Prairie Parkway?
If you drive through Tohoku that's built, or any part of Cross Prairie through Kindred, there's no residential driveways that push out onto there. They're all alley-loaded product that, whether they're alley-loaded townhomes or alley-loaded bungalow product.
So we are considering both Cross Prairie Parkway and Southbury Drive to be arterial roads?
They're adopted on the Osceola County Transportation Network map, and I believe St. Cloud adopted it at two city council meetings ago on their Transportation Network map.
This is difficult to grasp when they're not there yet.
I know, and that's what you said, Southbury, well, I mean, well, Cross Prairie is there, right, to a certain point.
Cross Prairie dead ends at the C-31 Canal, and then it actually picks up down south of Clay Whaley Road through the Edgewater Developments. And if you drive down there, there's a big drainage or bioswale on all, there's no residential driveways that go out there.
Drive there every Thursday, and I'm dying to know what that is. So that's Southbury probably, right, that's cutting off of Kissimmee Park Road. Clay Whaley and Kissimmee Park kind of intersect?
Yes, to the north is Cross Prairie Parkway.
Okay.
And that will continue up to the urban center, and then eventually go to the new Nolte Interchange. And this completes the leg, and the county's actually already received state grants and set the money aside to fund and build Cross Prairie Parkway, and it's on track to be completed when the new Nolte Interchange is completed in 2028.
And that little area that was down, I guess, south of the map, bottom of the map, that was that green section, you said that was the Nolte Road interchange?
Yes, it's currently being built right now on the Turnpike.
You see all the dirt down there?
I just, yeah, I just can't even envision how that's going to all flow later, but I, but I see it every day, so.
Well, that's what that special condition was read. I think that alignment for Cross Prairie was probably adopted 15 years ago, and similar to the development down at Belatera that you've all recently annexed into the city, there was a preset alignment, but again, those alignments were old and it's changed. You have on, you know, the ground data, so to speak, and that condition that we've requested allows flexibility. So that right-of-way will actually get a little further west away from that interchange, because interchanges actually have access separation as well. I think it's about a quarter of a mile, so 1,120 feet roughly, that it would need to be away. So Cross Prairie will move a little further west and create another development parcel in that southeast corner.
And Southbury is going into, what subdivision is that up there? That is.
That is Tohoku, and that big dirt area is a future high school site that's along the C-31 Canal, and then to the south of that, again, is the urban center.
Great, we're putting another school on a major arterial road. I love that.
That's for you and the school board to figure that out.
I know. That's just always one of my big questions, why do we put schools on arterial?
The adopted planning policies don't allow the schools on arterial roads, but the school board continues to put them there.
That's why they named the road Calm Soul Way, just to the northwest. I mean, obviously, this is one of those things that, I mean, we have no idea what the future holds, right?
I did want to touch on that a little bit, too. As far as the process, again, this is, two weeks ago, you adopted this as JPA EC. So now, we're required by state statute to bring this property in compliance with future land use map that has been adopted. That's the policy. But from here, there's, what's been written in, in the previous item is there's a required master plan, and that master plan sets the development standards, and that will have to go through the public hearing process and be approved at city council as well. That'll be, you know, work through a staff review and then go through the public hearing process, and then from that master plan, it sets the adopted standards, and then any potential development would still need to go through the normal process.
I'm just going to interject here, because actually that is not, I, I have to say this, I'm so happy that he's, he's here, because for somebody that arrived two months ago, I know nothing. I don't know the names of the neighborhoods yet, so I apologize. But the one thing that we did discuss is that this master planning process might not be as time-consuming and as involved as a PUD would be, for instance. And that is intentional, because as I mentioned to you, the whole point of this is to snag the opportunities as they come. So there will be a master planning process, it might not go through as much of a public involvement process as we would otherwise have. So just wanted to put that on the record, so we don't misinform you.
So instead of this being residential, as was normal, we're looking at it to be this new designation.
Employment commercial.
Yes, there is no residential, and that was part of what we want. There's plenty of residential here, and we even debated, should we allow residential as a mixed-use, as a secondary or ancillary category, let's say, because I want employ, employment to be near residential. In this particular case, because there is so much residential already nearby, as you can see, we're surrounded by residential, and there will be more around it, we didn't want to waste this very valuable resource, this land, with something that might become at a short term more attractable for a developer, which is always the case, right? That is easier and faster and, and frankly lucrative to do residential than it would be to do some of the strategic projects. But we want to have this as a reserve of land for strategic employment opportunities.
Yep. I get it.
And I think it's, I think it's a great thing. We need obviously more jobs here. I, I just wish it wasn't so isolated. It just, everything on the west side of the Turnpike scares me.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not going to be.
No, it won't be, you're right.
You got the interchange coming right there. Those guys will have it easier than I do.
Get us a nice Home Depot or another supercenter or something there to alleviate traffic, that'd be great.
That's where your mixed-use district is created on the west side with that urban center, that once that's built out, everybody on the west side of the Turnpike won't have a reason to go to the east side of the Turnpike.
I don't think we've done public comment yet. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on ordinance number 2025-80? No? Okay. Any other discussion, questions? No?
Just a reminder, there was a condition recommended by staff with this application.
Oh, that's right.
Can we go back to the slide that had the condition, please?
Yeah, it was with the arterial road changes approved by.
So the conditions were the realignment of Cross Prairie Parkway and Southbury Drive, and any related lot reconfigurations may be administratively approved by the city manager or designee in order to expedite the review process for the construction of these framework roadways. Yes, all right, so I'd like to call for a motion at this time on ordinance number 2025-80 for Neo City South.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-80 based on the 16 findings within the land development code and allowing for the conditions recommended by staff.
All right, we have a motion by Member Grigsby to recommend approval.
A second.
We have a second by Member Douglas. All in favor of recommending approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Okay. Motion passes 5-0. We have our next planning commission meeting scheduled for November 18th, 2025. scheduled for November 18th, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
May I, may I make a statement? I was just wondering, I think there was somebody that probably wanted to mention about notices. If we have something that goes off the agenda on a planning commission day, could we make that statement? Are we permitted to make that at the beginning of the meeting?
What, I'm not sure I understand.
We had a, we had one of our presentations that was moved to another time.
Oh, the case that was continued.
Yeah.
What you're, what you're asking for is that be announced at the outset of the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be done.
And it was, I believe it was my fault. It's just that we, you know, with everything that we're doing today, I should have announced as the very first case because the first case was not mine. It slipped my mind, but I completely understand the frustration of the public. Why, why are we here?
You're forgiven. We're just going to make that statement.
Yeah. And usually that would be something that in our city council, usually this city manager will be the first one to mention it, but I should have mentioned it as well. So, thank you.
I just have a quick question for city staff. Are the, the minutes that are approved for these meetings, are they going to be available on the city website? Or are they? Do we know?
They are not available as of now.
Are we able to get those added to our box or that we have access to?
Yeah, they're, they're sent with the box link. This last one, the last Wednesday's meeting was sent by another staff member.
Okay.
But yes, I normally include you in minutes.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'd like to make, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night.